I will call the meeting of Wednesday, July 15th, 2020 to order. And note for the record that we are participating via Zoom due to COVID-19 guidelines. And we will be taking public comment at the appropriate times and on each of the items. And Terian's going to help me keep track of who might want to make public comment. Those in the public wanting to comment should indicate so by raising their hand in the Zoom feature of raise hand or by touching star nine if they are on the telephone. So we will commence with our meeting. And Terian, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Arnrich?
Here.
Commissioner Butt?
Here.
Commissioner Glover?
Here.
Commissioner Haskew? Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Here.
Commissioner Romick?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Here.
Chair Pierce?
Here.
Representative Allen? Believe is absent. Representative Wilson?
Here.
Representative Worth?
Here.
Everyone is present noting that Representative Allen is absent.
Wonderful. So at this point, I'm going to go first to the pledge of allegiance and then I'll read our guidelines for participation for the board members. And I would like to ask Newell to do the pledge for us again as he did last time.
Thank you. Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to public, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I think we need to mute ourselves when we do that, all except for Newell, otherwise it winds up jumping all over the map. With that, I will request that as we proceed with the meeting, any committee questions and comments on an agenda item. If you'd like to speak, please physically raise your hand and wave it in my face because I might not catch you under participants, although you can do it there as well. Although we are co-hosts, so we don't have the ability, I guess, to raise our hands. Is that correct, Terian? Yes, we are all co-hosts, so you have to physically wave your hand and get my attention. All except for on item four, and I have Loella down for that one. So to speak, then unmute your mic. And after you speak, please re-mute your mic so we don't have too much background noise going on, shuffling of papers, dogs barking, all that good stuff. And again, public comment we will take, as I explained a little bit ago. For that, the clerk will unmute your mic. You will have three minutes to speak. And after three minutes, your mic will be automatically muted and your hand will be lowered. And all votes will be taken by roll call. So we will go to public comment.
Taylor's got his hand moving.
Bob Taylor, are you waving at me? You're muted. Bob Taylor, did you have a question? No. Okay, he's nodding his head no, and he's not unmuting, so I'm going to assume he does not. All right, so we will now go to public comment. This is a period where anyone in the audience may speak on any item in the jurisdiction, but not on the agenda for this evening. Do we have any guests who want to speak, Terian? I don't see any hands raised.
No, I don't see anyone, and I did not receive any written public comment.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, then we will close the public comment period and come back to our regular agenda. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes or comments from the board or a motion for approval?
This is Romick move approval of the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Romick and a second by Hudson for approval of the minutes. All in favor, please say aye to Terian when she calls your name.
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Aye.
Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Commissioner Haskew?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Aye.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Terian.
You're welcome.
The next item is, yes, you're right, Newell. We do need to introduce our new attorney, and I would let you do that since you have met our new attorney.
Okay, well, I just, I see David McCray there. I spoke last time, you know, we've over the years rotated our people council and really pleased to introduce David McCray, who is a former attorney with Caltrans, many years of experience. And the unusual find, find in private practice, an attorney that has this much transportation experience. Really just want to say, David, welcome. Glad to have you aboard their firm. One of his counterparts lives actually across the street from our CCTA offices. I think David works out of the Oakland office. But I think going to be a great asset in the, given where we're at in looking for compliance, seeking funding sources, and the complexity that we're going to face with new environmental challenges and sort of these off-site mitigations, I think we're going to really be delighted to have David on board. So welcome.
Well, thank you very much. It's a, it's a great honor to be working with, with all of you. My colleague Jake Duginsky is on the, on the Zoom as well, and he does literally live right across the street from CCTA. And we're both with Beverage and Diamond out of the San Francisco office. I was Caltrans Assistant Chief Counsel for nine years, and before that, I was active duty 21 years, United States Air Force. So I have lots of experience with lots of different types of projects all over the place, and Jake as well. So we're glad to be part of your team. Thank you.
Oh, welcome to both David and Jake. That's awesome.
Madam Chair, this is Karen Mitchoff. Since that area is my district, I'm just curious, Jake, where do you live in Contra Costa Center? Are you at Honey Trail? Are you at Fox Glove? Where are you at?
Please don't give your exact address.
No, 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 I just want the complex. There's a reason I'm asking the question. I mean, you need to unmute yourself.
Unmute yourself.
There we go. It gave me a, I'm actually in the Avalon apartment complex.
Wonderful. My former chief of staff lives there, and I'm glad to hear that's where it is. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's very nice. Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard. We'll try to keep you busy. But not too busy. All right, so we will then go to major discussion items. The first item on our regular agenda is from the Admin and Projects Committee. It's an informational item. Tim is going to present this. This is the I-680 Contra Custom Managed Lanes project. I'm sure Romick, you are waving at me, and so is.
Can we do the consent calendar first?
I'll move consent calendar, Chair Pierce.
I thought we did that.
No, we didn't.
We just did the minutes.
Oh, you're right. You're right. It's easy to skip them because consent minutes are together on my agendas.
No, we never hold meetings. We need to be trained.
Okay, so Hudson moved, who seconded?
Kelly. Or Chris.
Chris Kelly, okay. All right, so Terian, take it away.
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt? Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew?
Mute.
I see her.
Mute, Loella.
I hit every button on my darn computer.
Was that a yes? Sorry. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Did anybody else have a hand up for anything else? Randy, were you just trying to catch the consent calendar? Okay. Tim, take it away for the next item, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tim Hale, the Deputy Executive Director for Projects, and wanted to kind of bring this item before you and provide you an update on on the opening of the I-680 express lanes in the southbound direction. So earlier this year, MTC provided a presentation about the new tolling policy for zero emission vehicles on the I-680, and we committed to kind of bring back more details to you once they become available. Since then, the Authority Board approved the change order for the I-680 southbound express lanes to accelerate the opening of the express lanes by one year. It anticipated that the lanes will initially open as a carpool lane in August and then transition to an express lane. That's been completed. Authority staff has invited Barbara Lawrenson from MTC to provide an update and outreach to the public will occur to convey how the lane will open, how it will transition to an express lane, as well as begin polling of zero emission vehicles at a discount. In the same presentation, it's been given to both the SWAT and Transpac RTPCs. Barbara Lawrenson has been kind of doing their roadshow with this presentation, and we wanted to bring it to the full Authority Board. So with that, I will turn it over to Barbara.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Chair Pierce and Commissioners. I will share my screen. And is everyone able to see this? Let me get into slideshow mode.
Slideshow. Okay, thank you. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces. Also, as you see in the, in the screen, Lindsay Willis of CCTA is on the call this evening, and she and I have been working together to prepare for a lot of changes that are occurring this summer on I-680. So we wanted to make sure that this group was aware of several activities taking place. As, first, let me start with a little bit of an overview. The I-680 managed lanes that I'll talk about this evening are part of the 600-mile network of Bay Area express lanes that you can see on this map on the right of the screen. So four things are occurring in the next several months on the 680 managed lane corridor in Contra Costa County. And I'll walk through all of these four things in the next several slides. The first one is that this summer in August, we will be opening up new HOV2 lane capacity in Walnut Creek. So Contra Costa County Transportation Authority has been working on this project for over about a year and a half now, or almost two years now. And it's very exciting because the work has advanced ahead of schedule. And so we're, CCTA is very excited to open up this new lane capacity to drivers. So starting in August, crews will go out and re-stripe the corridor from Marina Vista Avenue to Red Gear Road so that this, this new facility is open to drivers. So as part of that striping, working from north to south on the map that you see on the, on the right, they will also implement some buffers, and I'll give you a little bit more details about these buffers in a subsequent slide. And then the new lane capacity is, we're closing, closing the gap in the HOV lane from Treat Boulevard to Red Gear Road. So that's very exciting for drivers. What this new lane, carpool lane capacity is going to do is create a consistent carpool lane all the way from Marina Vista Boulevard, our avenue, to Alcosta Boulevard in San Ramon. So that's a 23-mile facility for carpools. This lane from start, from top to bottom, will operate from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This slide shows some of the artwork that we'll be using in our messaging campaigns. Two of the key messages to let people know about is that it's a new two-person carpool lane, when it's opening, where it is, and also that there's new lane striping and that people always need to obey that lane striping. So as I mentioned, so more on this lane striping, this slide shows many of our public messages about the lane striping. Particularly that the reason for this is to improve lane performance and safety in key areas where there's a lot that traditionally there is a lot emerging that slows down the entire corridor. So there's some just basic messages to people about how, how to follow these rules, these, this new striping that they may not be familiar with. It's also important, there's someone in the meeting room, I think, since I, thanks. So I also want to point out that as the crews go down the corridor and stripe it to create this new capacity, they are going to leverage that work by putting up the signs in anticipation of the future tolling in these lanes. Now, that future tolling isn't going to start occurring for several months. So drivers will see some signs that use the words "express lanes" and have "fast track only" on them. But we've worked with, we've worked hard with Caltrans, a lot of people have worked hard with Caltrans to indicate, to add things to these signs to make it clear that this, the toll testing is still taking place. So our messaging will hit home that this lane is an HOV2 lane for now, tolling is occurring in the future, fast track will be needed in the future. That was my clicker. So how are we going to get all this, this word out? So we have several channels for doing that that are listed on this slide, including on corridor signage and social media and working through our, through our stakeholders, and of course, a lot of website information because it's really important that we drive people to a place where they can get the details because there is a lot of detail to this information. The second activity occurring this summer that I wanted to make you aware of is that BAFA will need to amend its toll ordinance in anticipation of the future tolling on the corridor from Marina Vista to Red Gear. So the tolling rules for that portion of the corridor are proposed to be identical to what we have on the open express lane. Consistency is very important to make sure that the lanes work, work well. So all of these policies are what people see today on the open express lanes. So the, the, the work for the tolling ordinance adoption will take place from July through September. There'll be two meetings at BAFA and a public comment period from August 9th to September 9th. And then finally, as I spoke to you about in January of this year, MTC adopted the policy that we would start clean air vehicle half-price tolling on the open portion of the 680 express lanes. This is a policy that all the express lane operators are working to roll out so that it will be consistent across all the express lanes. So our messages for drivers related to this are about why we're doing it, when it's happening, and the requirements that they need to follow and the types, what type of tag they need to get. So if they drive as a solo driver in their eligible clean air vehicle on the 680 Contra Costa Express lanes, they can pay half-price tolls, and if they carpool as a two-person carpool or more, they would still travel toll-free. And again, we'll use several of the same channels that I had on the other slide to get this message out as well. You can see that we're trying to use a lot of visual clues in our advertising to indicate that what, what aspects of the rules apply to what part of the corridor that we're talking about. So for this, it's between Walnut Creek and San Ramon because it, that's what's happening now. This policy will not occur on the other portion of the corridor until tolling actually begins in early 2021. I also want to point out that, that Fast Track is putting out some, a lot of advertising about this as well, including using voltage charging stations that are in the corridor. So that was, that was the overview we wanted to provide to you, and Lindsay and I, and Lisa Klein from MTC is also on the call. She will be presenting later. So all three of us are here to answer your questions.
All right. Any questions for Barbara or Lindsay? Can you, Newell, I can see your hand. If you can unshare your screen.
Yes.
Then I can see people.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. Newell, go ahead.
Lindsay, thank you for being here. We're so excited to have been able to take, you know, opportunity with reduced traffic and do all the day work and get this project going. I didn't see in the presentation, and it's something that we learned in the lessons we learned last time when we opened up the southern portion of the 680 corridor, was that when you go to other lanes like this, for example, on 580, every time you go below a sensor, your responder has an audible noise, but yet on 680, it doesn't. And I kind of understand the reason. It's sort of the new methodology. The problem is people call us in large numbers because they say, well, what's wrong? It's either my responder's not working right, or the device isn't, or is it free? Because there's no way to know whether or not you've been charged until you see a bill. How are we going to address this time? Are we going to notify people, by the way, this, this particular quarter is different?
Thank you, Newell, for that question. That is a good point. So this quarter will operate the same. The tags will not beep. And actually, the new tags that have been procured, so if you got a tag now, it doesn't even beep on the bridges anymore. So I think people will start to get used to the fact that their tags don't beep. But it is an important public message. You are correct, and we should make sure that we put that out, that people should not anticipate that their tags will be worried that the tags aren't working.
We don't get the phone calls. Thank you.
No, you can pass them on to us, too.
Interesting comment. I guess my tag is so old, it does still beep on bridges.
Yes, the old ones still do.
Well, we haven't been across a bridge in a long time. I don't even know if it beeps anymore. I'll tell you, my poor Fast Track, I used to get a bill, you know, an update every three weeks. Now it's like, well, I wonder what's in my account. Maybe I need to take it out.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? This is an information item, so we don't need a motion. But any other questions or comments? Most of us have seen this presentation more than once. Bob, you look like you're talking, but I don't know if you're talking to us.
Yes, I am. How much earlier are we versus what we expected?
A year.
Can you answer? I think it's about a year. Do you know?
We're a year ahead of schedule. It was actually your action of the board that approved that acceleration.
Wow. That, and did it save anybody any money?
It's anticipated to save, save money, but we don't have the actual final number yet.
Okay, but, but do you think it'll be significant, Tim? A year is a lot, or excuse me, a year is a long time in a, doing highway.
Yeah, we, we're still trying to account for the numbers. We're not exactly sure how much savings we're going to have.
Okay, well, let, definitely let us know so we can brag about.
Definitely. Any other question? Amy, unmute yourself.
I just want to just say thank you to our CCTA and MTC staff for your work on this. You know, for all of you, I just want to recall that when we opened the first express lanes on 680, all our staff were available, that, you know, MTC staff and CCTA, if you, you know, if your constituents have questions, I think as Barbara indicated, to not hesitate to forward those questions on to, to, you know, MTC so that we can, or CCTA, that we can respond to the questions. Because I know that it's all about mobility and the new, new things are, are, you know, new, new changes are always a challenge. But I just wanted to say I love the little convertible car with the mats. That is just, that's so, so cute. That gives me a smile, so.
It marks the year.
Marks the year. You know, you should collect those, save them. They'll be collector's items. So thank you.
And modeled it after your Miata, Amy.
Yeah, exactly. And we had a terrific presentation at SWAT last week. Thanks, Lindsay, for that. And I think there's a lot of excitement and appreciation that CCTA was able to deliver the lane a year ahead of time. So at BADA, we were scrambling to get the electronics set so the, so it can open in a full way, so.
Yeah, you're what's holding this up.
Yeah, I know. Working hard. As, as, as you know, that's sort of the area of the commission where I'm working in, and staff is really working hard to get, make this, make this, to speed it up. So I think we'll be, be there soon. So thank you again.
Very good. Well, if there are no other questions or comments, thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Lindsay. It made even more sense the second time around, so wonderful. Thank you very much. The next item I will take, and as Chair, I am asking for CCTA Board approval of the 13th Amendment to the Authority's employment agreement with Randy Iwasaki, our executive director, which will adjust his compensation to $397,052.85 per year effective July 1st, 2020. This amount accounts for the 2.5% cost of living adjustment, which all of our employees received and which was approved by the Authority Board in June through our adoption of the publicly available pay schedule for the next fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I'll move the item.
Second.
The term of the amendment will remain through April 15th, 2021. We have a motion by Mitchoff and a second by Arnrich. Any other comments? Hearing none. Terian, do we have any hands raised that I don't see?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, then, Terian, please take the roll.
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all, and thank you, Randy. We love having you around. You're doing a great job. The next item is an action item, and that will be introduced by Hisham and with a presentation by Lisa Klein and MTC for Plan Bay Area 2050 Performance Assessment Findings for the Regional Express Lines Network. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I will introduce this item as one of the counties represented by BAFA. The Authority is being asked to support the actions that are included in the commitment letter shown in Attachment A in your packet. As part of Plan Bay Area 2050, MTC staff completed the performance assessment of high-cost projects proposed to be included in the RTP. The evaluation was based on how well the project meets the RTP guiding principles, its benefit cost ratio, as well as its equity impacts. The regional express lane network project, which is a multi-county project and includes future express lanes on Interstate 680, State Highway 4, and I-18 Contra Costa, had few performance shortcomings. A series of actions are proposed to improve the network performance and ensure the project is included in the RTP. This will allow the network to compete for future state and federal funds. Lisa Klein, the Director of Asset Management and Field Operations at MTC, has graciously agreed to do a quick overview of what is included in the commitment letter. Lisa?
Thank you, Hisham. I am going to go ahead and share my screen. I have a few slides that I think will aid in this. I have a few slides that I think will aid in this. Need in the, all right, just give me a moment to swap my display. All right. Well, so thank you very much, Hisham, for that introduction. And thank you and good evening to Chair Pearson's directors. It's really nice to be able to be here tonight to just give a real brief background on the letter that staff is asking you to support. As was well presented, I think, in the earlier item, MTC and CCTA really have a fantastic partnership on the express lanes, particularly on the six eighty corridor, which I'm so glad to see the progress on those lanes. And we are working collectively with several other counties in the Bay Area as well to really plan for and ultimately deliver a regional express lane network, a network that really covers covers the better part of the region. Let's see. So and so this slide here shows a map of the regional network. It's the same network that was in Barbara's presentation, although the colors are a little different. I won't dwell on the colors unless some questions come up. We've really been working collectively with CCTA and the other partners over the past year to refresh the network, express lane network for Plan Bay Area twenty fifty and which is the region's long range plan and sustainable community strategy. So this map shows the network we've arrived at through that process. This network would be built over a thirty year period. And really, the fundamental goal here, as you well know, is really to move more people with the existing capacity we have and really support express bus and carpooling at a regional level. As Hisham mentioned, in Contra Costa County, this network does include completing the express lanes on Interstate six eighty. In fact, also completing the, you know, the linkage all the way through, really all the way to Santa Clara County on six eighty. It includes conversion of HOV lanes on State Route four and on Interstate eighty. I what, you know, what I see when I see this network is a network that's very highly connected and is also really well matched with express bus plan for the region. And I know that is an area that a great interest in the six eighty corridor. And of course, the I eighty corridor is is the region's is the corridor with the heaviest express bus service in the in the region. Part of this effort of refashioning the network is to make sure the express lane plan really addresses the guiding principles for Plan Bay Area fifty. And those are the colorful principles shown on the right of this slide. I know many of you are active in, of course, MTC and ABAG, and I suspect many of you have heard a lot about these principles over the past several months. What the commitment letter that we're seeking your approval on, what it does is is expresses endorsement of the steps that express lane partners are taking to really meet these principles. So I'm actually going to address these from the bottom up because I think the the ones on the bottom are the sort of the most the ones that we're kind of most familiar with and have kind of been, we've been talking about for the longest time, the longer time. The first, the first really is, you know, always be mindful of the use of public funds to make sure that we are delivering, you know, like cost effective portions of the network. So taking steps to increase the benefits and decrease, decrease the costs. The second commitment is really the majority of the network is really about converting existing existing lanes and existing HOV lanes in particular to express lanes. And that's important because that's an important step in really reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It's also really important to be to being cost effective. The they are complemented, really, the lane conversions are complemented with some very strategic widening. In particular, there's a prioritizing projects that really close gaps in the network. And we, you know, certainly see that to be the case on Interstate six eighty and really support express bus. And again, those those projects are important because they really support the connectivity of the network and of course, support the ability of the network to really serve as a right of way for buses. And the last item really responds to a significant growing pressure of affordability that the whole region is experiencing in in transportation and housing as well. And it really is especially acute for our lower lowest income residents. And this is a commitment that BFA would make to pilot a means based toll discount program on its express lanes. And I will say just a word more about that because, as I mentioned earlier, that is kind of probably the newest of these ideas. It's still, in fact, it's so new that we still have quite a bit of work to do to really define the program and get it on the street. But we do think it's very important. What we would do here is pivot off the Clipper Start Program, which some of you may be familiar with. That's a program that actually launched today that will provide a discount for low income travelers on transit, transit operations. And it's going to start small. It's going to start on BART and Caltrain and Golden Gate Transit. But there is a great deal of interest in expanding that program. And I think that by the end of the year or so, we'll have a number of additional operators that are participating in that program. Let me pivot back to the express lanes program. The idea for the express lanes toll discount is really to build off that concept, expand it to express lanes, really using Fast Track. I mentioned earlier that BFA would pilot this on our express lanes. This busy map, but as you know, that's Interstate six eighty, circled in purple, and then on Interstate eight eighty, which are lanes that will be opening in a few months in Alameda County. I'll be honest with you, we don't know for sure if it'll be one or both lanes at this point. That's we're still exploring that. You know, I would certainly like to see it a larger footprint, but we have some work to do to to make that happen. I think it's an exciting opportunity. It is really on the cutting edge, I would say, of what folks are doing nationally. And it really is made possible by that advanced work, through foundation work that we've done on Clipper Start. It gives us a great starting point. That really concludes my my brief presentation. I do want to just close by really thanking CCTA and and your staff for the really tremendous partnership that we've had on the express lanes program. And I want to encourage you to support the commitment letter, which will ensure, as I just mentioned, that the network has a place in Plan Bay Area. I would be happy to take any questions you have. Stop sharing with.
Are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay. Bob?
I was just gonna ask her, how many since we're doing this on the cutting edge? How many? How many others you think will be here in twenty fifty?
I'm not sure I understand your, I'm not sure I understand your question.
You do.
We're gonna, we're gonna go down in history, right? Because we're gonna meet those expectations, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering if we'll be around in twenty fifty to see those accomplishments.
Oh. Well, I think I think that the network itself, we hope will result a lot faster than twenty fifty. It's always a goal to build it faster. So I hope we all get to celebrate that quite a bit before twenty fifty. The means based toll pilot program will be implemented much, much before that. I mean, hopefully within a year. So that one, we should all be able to to really celebrate much sooner.
Okay, good, because I'd like to relish in that. So thank you.
Yes, I understand.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Lisa? Amy, unmute yourself.
I did. Thank you. Well, for me, twenty fifty, it's closed closing in on the century mark. So who knows?
And I'll be there. Maybe we can celebrate my birthday there.
Exactly. But Lisa, I just want to thank you for, you know, your work on this and working with our Contra Costa County Authority, you know, Transportation Authority staff and the tremendous work that you've done on this project. And we are just, we're just waiting to get to, as we say, to untie that Walnut Creek knot. Got to get that that northbound section. But I think what you identified, which is really relevant to us. For us, the express lanes are a really important opportunity to increase our, you know, residence mobility and particularly using both, you know, automobiles and express buses. But to make these, and as you know, we have a county connection, has an agreement with Bishop Branch, where we provide express buses from the BART station. So getting those getting those buses to be able to move quickly is really important. So, you know, I just want to thank you very much for your incredible work. I mentioned earlier in the presentation, when we opened up the first set of lanes, MTC staff was really available to very much for our residents and for our elected leaders that had questions. And you were a big part of that. So thank you. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thanks, Amy. Let's go to Dave.
Yeah, Amy, I think you're on to something there. We could, we have a new theme, untie the nut knot.
I don't think Luella cared for that one. It wasn't her fault. She just got tied up in the middle of it. There are so many ways I'm going to get even with Dave Hudson. All right, now we're having a good time. All right. Any other comments or do I have a motion? Don't see any.
A motion or?
Okay, I'm sorry. Who who moved that?
I'll move it.
Okay, Taylor moved.
Second by Glover.
Second by Glover. East County taking over. All right. Sounds good. I don't see any public comments, Teriann. Did we receive anything ahead of time?
No, we did not.
Okay, then I will ask you to please call the roll.
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew? Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Teriann.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate your being here. So we'll keep it moving. All right, the next item will be presented by Jack Hall, talking about a letter of no prejudice request from the city of Walnut Creek. And I already have a request from Luella Haskew to move this item when the time comes. So don't anybody steal that.
Move approval.
No, 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 no. We need a presentation because this is a policy issue. We really do need to understand. So I'm going to ask Jack to get into this, please.
Okay, good evening, Chair Pierce and Commissioners. My name is Jack Hall, and I'm the ITS CV AV Program Manager for CCTA. Last month, this board approved a framework and principles for preparing an allocation plan addressing the adverse impacts of COVID nineteen on Measure J sales tax revenue. The framework allows project sponsors to use other funding to advance their Measure J project if Measure J funding is not available and the sponsor wants to proceed with the project. By CCTA issuing a letter of no prejudice to the city of Walnut Creek, the city has the ability to be reimbursed for project costs if measure, Measure J funds are available and the city meets all applicable Measure J policies as outlined in our local agency coordination guide. The letter of no prejudice is not a guarantee for reimbursement, and the city of Walnut Creek would be assuming all financial risks if funds are not appropriated in the future. Walnut Creek is requesting a letter of no prejudice for their traffic operations center communications upgrade and the Walker Avenue sidewalk improvement. With that, staff seeks board approval of Resolution twenty dash twenty six dash P, which allows the city to advance their two projects using other funds and preserving the ability to be reimbursed at a later date based on the availability of Measure J funds as determined in the allocation plan and future strategic plans. That concludes my report. Steve Waymeyer, Walnut Creek's Assistant Public Works Director, is on the Zoom meeting and can answer any project specific questions, and I would be happy to answer answer any other questions.
Wonderful. Any questions on this item? Luella, did you want to expand on anything?
Oh, I I I appreciate that this consideration is being given. These projects are really important to Walnut Creek and to to actually have the grace to know that we can go forward and if there is money, get the appropriate reimbursement rather than freezing them and wait for funds to come forward. So I thank the Transportation Commission and the people who are making this possible. I'm reminding that there are two letters of correspondence from, in the correspondence section of of our packet. There are a lot of really good projects out of there that hope this COVID budget nightmare goes away and we can go back into really good. But thank you very much for letting us do this. Too many words for gratitude, but I really officially want to make the motion right now.
Second.
Approve, to approve.
Okay, motion by Haskew and a second by Arnrich. Are there any further discussion? Anything else anybody wants to say on this item? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? I don't see any raised hands at all.
No public comment.
Very good. Thank you, Teriann. All right, then, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew? Commissioner Hudson?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. So the next item on our agenda, we're getting there, folks. We're into planning items now. The next item is a presentation by Matt Kelly about good old vehicle miles traveled and the methodology for land use projects as we go forward. We can't use delay anymore. So Matt, how are we going to make this work?
You got it, Julie. I'm gonna try and share my screen right now. Thank you again, Chair Pierce and Authority Board members. My name is Matt Kelly. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner here at CCTA. And let's see, you can probably see everything. Let's see. Can you now see my full screen?
We can now see the slideshow. And not your notes.
Okay, good. That's what I want. Okay. Tonight, I'm here to summarize the proposed updates to the growth management program in order to implement the changes to transportation impact analysis in SEQA due to the passage of SB seven forty three. This applies to local land use projects for which our local jurisdictions are the lead agencies and replaces the current level of service metric with vehicle miles traveled. The growth management task force was growth management program task force was tasked with guiding the update of the GMP to reflect this change and to develop resources for the lead agencies to implement into their local project approval processes. So I'll now provide a summary of the proposed changes to the growth management program. So the VMT policy in the growth management program focuses on four areas. Defining VMT and how to measure it, screening projects from VMT analysis, setting significance thresholds for requiring mitigation, and defining those mitigations. And it also addresses the ability for local jurisdictions to continue to use level of service for operational analyses, but just not in SEQA. And related to these changes, jurisdictions will need to demonstrate compliance with the new policy through their growth management program checklist as they normally do. CCTA will update the baseline VMT annually with output from our model. And the authority will revisit this VMT policy in two years or sooner if if you all request that. So just wanted to give you an idea of the schedule that got us here. And and we've basically been taking these changes to the growth management program around the county since February for input from our stakeholders, including including visiting all of the RTPC boards this past month. I'm not going to go through everything. And now I'll just briefly run through those four main components of the proposed changes. The first definition of VMT metrics. We've identified how to analyze both housing projects and employment generating projects. Those are your commercial type of projects. And each have a different methodology to accurately assess the VMT output from those projects. We will continue to develop guidance for other types of projects that you may come across, including industrial projects, schools and hospitals. For VMT screening, we've provided a list of project types or characteristics that would allow those projects to be screened or exempted from further VMT analysis. And you can see them there. And let's see. So for VMT significance and mitigation criteria, we have defined the significance thresholds to where projects must mitigate their VMT, which varies depending on the project type, whether it's that housing type of project or a commercial type of project that's attracting employers. So mitigating the VMT impacts. We will be developing a set of tools to assist local agencies in developing VMT mitigation strategies for their projects, including an expanded TDM program. And on a separate track, we were just awarded a grant from Caltrans to develop a VMT mitigation banker exchange program. So we'll be moving forward with that, though that'll take a couple of years. An unchanged from existing jurisdictions may adopt a finding of overriding considerations should they demonstrate that feasible mitigations are not able to be identified for a particular project. So that really summarizes the changes to the growth management program without going into all the details that we discussed with you back in, in May and then at the RTPCs in July. So the staff's recommendation tonight is to approve those changes to the growth management program and direct staff to update the GMP guidance documents and develop those VMT analysis tools that I mentioned for use by the local jurisdictions. I'd like to give a big thanks to the growth management program task force members. Those folks represent most of your local jurisdictions and transit agencies here in Contra Costa for all the time they contributed to this effort over the last 10 months. And I can now take any questions and comments.
Thank you, Matt. All right. You can unshare your screen, Matt. I can see everybody.
Gladly.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody waving at me.
This is Romick. I'll move approval then.
All right.
If you'll tell us where that background is.
Oh, ah, nice.
Go in there tomorrow.
Okay, so that was a motion by Romick and did I hear that Hudson second that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Yes, Noel.
I was just going to say that, oh, you know, this is probably the most significant change that we've made. LOS was simple, straightforward. It actually throttled development. I just want to be honest and I know because I, I do development and stuff. It will change our cities because VMT, when you do vehicle miles and how you reduce those, it means you're going to facilitate more construction in your community, particularly housing, live work concepts, things like that. So instead of that traffic signal, that intersection being barrier, you can mathematically now show based on projections and assumptions, the type of housing, it will change the look of cities. There's both a positive to this, but there's a real impact. So I think it's where we need to go. I think VMT has more significant impacts on long-term rights to cut those communities down. But it real most effectively will have an immediate effect on our communities.
Matt, let me ask you just a couple of questions. And I'm sure you've told me this before, but I'm not thinking of it right now, so I'll just leave memory in age. You guys are going to calculate the 85%, whatever that average is for everybody, so we all have that number. And you're available to help our jurisdictions figure out how to calculate when we have a development.
Yes, and our consultants, yes.
Okay, that helps. And is that 85% a number that was in statute or is that a number that we all came up with collectively?
So it was part of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR's, part of their technical advisory regarding SB 743 and the changes to SEQA. That is the document that people are using until they get their own policies in place. So it also reflects the state's greenhouse gas goal reduction targets. So we were able to choose a number, but we wanted to choose a number that had the most defensibility in the legal circles because we know it's SEQA. It will be litigated. So we think the 85% or 15 below the regional average is the most legally defensible number we could come up with.
Okay, now you mentioned SEQA and defending. I'm guessing that some of us with projects that are on the periphery that where we don't have a lot of jobs, but we have a lot of houses are going to be having a hard time meeting that 15% reduction and are going to have to make that overriding considerations finding. Is that going to be automatically a tool for people opposed to development to use to, or is that somehow protected by state law?
Well, it is, you know, it is acceptable under SEQA today. It is today. It was with level of service and it will be with VMT. So it's, you know, everything I think is challengeable under, under SEQA. You know, depends on where you're at and, and how litigious your residents are. But yeah, we, you know, everything is is, you know, people can sue about anything, but we think that this number will protect us as much as we can. We've, we've run it through our legal counsel and, and they've given us the the green light on that. But we do understand that especially communities without a lot of transit, they're going to have a hard time coming up with those mitigations that are going to bring them down that 85th percentile. So we definitely get that. That's why we're trying to come up with a list, a bigger list of TDM strategies and the reductions that go along with those. But, you know, that's why we wanted to have that findings of overriding consideration available because there are going to be some communities that just won't be able to cobble together enough mitigations to reach the level they need to.
Yeah, the reason I asked it was whether it was maybe covered under some of the new state law is because, you know, people are using SEQA as a sledgehammer against development. And it's on that, on the, on the Housing Methodology Committee and we're talking about how do we get to you know, the, the plan or some plan and where do we put all the housing? To me, it makes more sense that we put it closer to where the jobs are if we can't move the jobs to where the houses are. But this is going to be a real hard one for I think a lot of local jurisdictions to get passed. And so I think we're, we've got a lot of conflicting rules here that we've got to meet VMT and yet we've got to build the houses everywhere and, and, you know, a lot of the advocates are saying spread the houses like peanut butter so they go everywhere that they already are. And I, I think we're just asking for trouble, but you're going to get me on a soapbox. So I'll stop there.
A good point.
Chris?
I just want to say, Matt, thank you for your work and I'm hoping that in, you know, the year two, three ahead that you can maybe come back with an assessment, some examples of where this has worked well for the community and where maybe it's been problematical. So I'd like to just see that in the future.
Great. Yeah, I think we'll see, have some good examples over the next year. So we can definitely come back.
Great.
Okay, I'm going to go to Dave and then Randy.
Julie, I think this is actually a great opportunity because what you just said is correct. Why in the world have we insisted that Clayton and Maraga build housing? I mean, it, it makes so little sense to me. There's no jobs there. There's not going to be jobs there. But the centers, unfortunately, where I'm at ground zero are really stuck with trying to do this. So the overriding consideration that really needs to get studied from day one, because we're really at the ground floor right now is teleconferencing. If you could show that this works, I think you've got your overriding consideration. And it is going to change things. It's just a matter of time. It's starting now. We're making pledges. If you could show that you've got that many less homes, then you can do it. A real problem is going to be is if they try and make us do additional housing in places that have pretty high numbers. But that shouldn't be the way it is. If teleconferences is keeping us from moving to Tracy or wherever else, we should get some kind of credit for it in these smaller communities that aren't growing. You shouldn't be stuck trying to double your population in a way that doesn't make sense.
Thanks, Dave. I'll call on you the next time I have one of those.
No, no, Noel's calling on me first. He already had a good laugh when I brought that.
Okay, Randy?
The other thing I would like to add is we recently competed for, received the VMT, or we, Caltrans grant to develop a VMT mitigation program. And we kicked the meeting off the other day. There was, it was mad, John and I, me only because I'm interested in the topic. But there were six Caltrans people on, like six or seven online. Becky Frank dialed in from Elko, Nevada after a car broke down. And so she was on the line waiting for her car to get fixed. So it's a topic that is of interest not only to us here, but the state as well. They're very excited about our proposal. I mentioned it several times. And so we're in a good position. We're scheduling a call with Bill Higgins and Keith Dunn to see if there's any interest on a or statewide level to make sure that we're, we're doing things the right way. But having the grant and building the framework for a mitigation program with Caltrans, I think puts us in a, in a good position.
It's a very good point, very good point. And Amy's going to carry this message back to MTC that we got to make all this stuff work consistently because we've got requirements coming at us from right, left and sideways for, for where the arena goes. And we're trying to meet greenhouse gas targets and I, I don't know how we're going to make this work if everybody expects it to go out like peanut butter. So.
Federal thinks ducked out of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be problematic. Okay, I have a motion by Romick and a second by Hudson. Any further comments from the board? Or do we have anybody in the public, Terriann?
No public comment.
Okay, then Terriann, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alrighty, thank you all. The next item is an informational item. John, you're going to present this. It's a discussion of the analysis of impacts on travel behavior in the county due to COVID-19. Hopefully we won't ever go back to 100%, but I bet you're not going to tell me that.
No. Good evening, Chair Pierce and Commissioners. Again, this is, my name is John Huang. I'm Director of Planning for CCTA. And again, this is an informational item. I'm going to share my screen and we have a short presentation for you. Okay, are you able to see it?
Yep, it looks good.
Okay, thank you. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the board information of staff's assessment on how COVID-19 has impacted the transportation network in Contra Costa. If you've been driving around the past few weeks or even the past couple of months, you'll see and notice how traffic is picked up. More cars on the road and especially if you drive during the peak periods, uh, you can definitely see congestion, which is a kind of unexpected. And that's what my presentation is going to cover. As the Transportation Authority and CMA Condition Management Agency for Contra Costa, it was important for us to take a proactive approach in looking at how COVID-19 is impacting transportation. Our started goal was to understand travel behavior before and after COVID-19 and look at how transit ridership and traffic congestion will be impacting the new future and try to start thinking about how we can do or what we can do to mitigate this impacts. I have a series of slides to go over in the next next few minutes to kind of show you travel behavior for the past several months. This one shows the BART trends. This is taken from the BART, the the presentation that BART did. As you can see, the drop in ridership between March and mid-May. Again, 90% of the, in this slide means 90% of the baseline, which is the average ridership. So as you can see, between March 2nd and March 9th, there's a drop right there between 90 and 61%. We can assume that the drop means that people were starting to fear exposure of COVID-19. And then if you look further, when the Bay Area Shelter in Place order was implemented, there was a significant, significant drop, down 15%. And then once BART started modifying their services and headways, we're looking at a, a ridership of nearly average of 7% through mid-May. And I want to share this slide, the next couple of slides, show you how comparable Contra Costa County is to the whole Bay Area as far as BART ridership is concerned. There's a lot of numbers on here, but if you focus on the the circle red, numbers in red, it shows that some, it has, we're down to 7% of normal ridership. And that's pretty much in line with the overall Bay Area ridership for BART, which is 7.25. And you've noticed also the Antioch, Pittsburgh Center and Pittsburgh Bay Point actually has a little bit higher percentage than the rest of the stations. Now this is taken on, at stations on, on Highway 24 and 4. I want to show that you, this one, this is stations along I-80. And you can see that the number is a little bit higher, but, but it's still maintained, it's still pretty low. 12%. These are the county connection ridership trends that we acquired from County Connection. As I understand it, the County Connection are currently still waiving their fares during the COVID-19 times. So even then ridership during weekdays is possibly 80% below baseline levels. We can see the trend that is coming back more on the week, on the weekend more than the weekdays. The transit figures shows that maybe folks are still continuing to need this mode of transportation and taking our, in or taking advantage of the free rides. This slide shows a State Route 24 in the eastbound direction. So we're looking at the PM direction for the months of June and July of 19. If you want to look at the yellow and the purple line, that was what was happening last year, pre-COVID. And if you look at the red and the blue line of May 20 and June of this year, you see that traffic is in the PM period is really back up to where it was last year, which is pretty amazing. This is a same information on Highway 4. And again, June 19th of 2019 is the yellow line. And June 20 is, is a red line. And you see how, again, it follows the trend that traffic is, congestion is back. It follows the trend that traffic is congestion is back. So the top right hand corner is uh something that Bart put together that we enhance. What Bart did was they had a projection out to. Uh, year twenty twenty two. Anticipating uh the low and the high. Uh, scenarios of what they think uh ridership will return over those periods. The gray bar is what we're focusing on in our analysis. We're looking at fiscal year twenty one, so we're in the first quarter. So right now, you can see, uh, we're looking at the low end, which is, which is the yellow line. Uh, looking at an average of twenty five percent and then the top, the higher uh projection, which is seventy five percent. So in our analysis, which is the table down in the lower left hand corner, shows what we're going to analyze it, which is twenty five percent on low. Fifty percent and seventy five percent ridership. And then also factoring in unemployment as well as working from home. Now, this figure working from home for four percent, uh, I think it's pretty low, so we're going to change that and increase that a little more. Um, and then uh our analysis results will. Uh, include the measures of effectiveness such as expected delay and travel time index. So the next step is that we're going to prepare an L S, analysis results and finding, looking at near term mitigation measures. I think there's a prime opportunity for us to uh look at transportation and transit and um. And see how we can uh impact and mitigate somebody uh expected traffic influx. Post trick COVID nineteen. And look at some near term and long term solutions and uh our plan is to bring back these recommendations to the board. Uh, for your consideration and uh, and hopefully we can come up with some potential mitigation measures and prioritize these measures. With that, I'll answer any questions and your comments. Thank you.
Wonderful. Does anyone have questions of John? I'm looking for waving hands. I don't see any. This is an informational item. So are there, Amy, are you waving?
Romick.
Romick is waving.
Yeah, just to follow up on some comments on that, uh, we noticed with Tri Delta that we're at about fifty percent Monday through Friday. About seventy five percent on the weekends and that same, it's pretty much the same with the San Joaquin uh Amtrak line. Where we're running about fifty percent Monday through Friday and about seventy five percent on weekends. Um, I'm not sure what to make of that other than people still need the service. Uh, and and how to get more of them back on it and um. We'll have the, mostly a whole lot of uh. Of campaigning to get people to reuse transit again, I think.
Okay, any other comments, anecdotally or otherwise? I think we're all seeing the traffic building back up far faster than we were hoping for. In many ways. All right, if not, thank you, John. Good presentation, lots of information. Uh, did we have any public comment on that, Terri Ann? I don't see anyone.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're getting there, folks. We have correspondence letters in our authority board packet. We have letters from both Lafayette. And uh Caltrans talking about availability of money. Um, we've already um talked about the, the one from Walnut Creek on this agenda, but there are a couple others coming forward. And Caltrans doesn't want to seem to have to find money for us for our project, so. Um, we'll have to work on that a little bit more. Um, your committee reports are also in the packet. Um, we are on to authority board and staff comments. I have no comments as chair. Do we have any commissioner or ex officio representative comments? Amy?
Thank you, Minute of Chair. I, I just have a real brief uh comments from M T C. First of all, the M T C next Wednesday will um. Will uh vote to distribute the remaining uh cares funds. The operators worked phenomenally well and hard to come up with a, with an agreement that. Has been supported in the. Planning, the programming and allocations committee recommended unanimously to forward it on to the commission uh next week. The other thing that's really critical about the work we're doing right now is to develop. Um, Bay Area region wide standards for health and safety protocols for the transit operations. You know, we just got that report about uh the, looking at the percentage losses of, you know, transit operations. And health and safety security is a big, huge part of getting riders and operators to feel safe in those, in the buses and the trains. So that's a huge, huge push that I think we'll be getting some solid recommendations to adopt uh next, next Monday on the twentieth. Which will be the task force, meaning Blue Ribbon Task Force. But I just wanted to highlight, in addition, you know, earlier this evening, we talked about the express lanes and plan Bay Area twenty fifty. Um, in addition, you know, part of a big part of this process, like, you know, ours at C C T A is, is community outreach. And next Monday on um, uh, July twentieth at six o'clock, there will be a virtual. Uh, meeting to talk about the plan and get community feedback. So you all will be getting, receiving um emails about that. And uh with uh information about how to sign on and getting, we're getting the word out to the public to um engage people in this process. It's still, you know, a year away. You know, I'm working the transportation side and Julie is working the housing. And so uh, it's, it's, it is going to be a real challenging time this year. The other thing that they've done differently, following the direction from California Air Resources Board. We have to divide the plan into two phases, which is causing some real challenges in terms of queuing up uh projects. So we're working through that. So um, um, that's uh my, my report for all of you. Thanks.
And I'll just add on to what Amy said, the draft planned area twenty fifty is on the street for comment. So um, take a look at that. Dave?
Yeah, uh, I don't know how correct this is, but I just received an email that says they found a vaccine for COVID. If this is going to change any of our scheduling, uh, Randy, going into, I, I assume we don't have anything for August. But uh, as soon as you can get it to us, I'd appreciate it because I'm trying to plan an anniversary in the middle of this thing somewhere.
I, I wouldn't anticipate anything really changing for a good, long time at the point we're at right now, quite frankly.
So are you saying that Randy's developing that? If he were in charge of it, I'd feel a lot of confidence.
Yeah, I can tell you from the county's perspective, we're getting updates all the time. There's no vaccine on the horizon right away.
Actually, I, I just received it at six thirty tonight.
Well, we have to consider all the sources and their veracity, but um, okay. So that's something we can speculate about, but the, um, any other commissioners or ex officios have a comment? Lawella, did you raise your hand? Nope, you just sat forward. Okay. All right, um, Randy, your turn.
Good evening. I'm glad I can see everybody. You all look like you're pretty healthy and safe. I wanted to say that. You're as feisty as ever, that's for sure. So that's a good sign. I have three things to talk about in my executive director report. The first is the Federal Highway Administration meeting. We have talked to the, the feds, uh, F H W A about. Our, our transit partners are, they don't have the revenue that they had when they made commitments on these pilot, these grant programs. And so we, rather than wait till the end, we came, we came in early. And we worked very well with Federal Highway Administration and they came up with an idea of a tapered match. And so if the revenue, we, we, they'll put more money in upfront and they'll taper that match out toward the end. And so they're working with us. And I think this is important for future grants, for future infra grants, all those Federal Highway Administration grants. We want to be known as an agency that works very well with our funding partners. We, we went in early rather than late, and so it was a very, very good meeting. The second point I have is, is we met with the California Public Utilities Commission. And that there was a Senate bill thirteen seventy six written by Hill in two thousand eighteen and it, it. It directed the C P U C to put up a program together because the state was collecting ten cents a ride from all the T N Cs. So that. And that money for Contra Costa's purposes is somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and forty to three hundred and fifty thousand. I've seen estimates up and down. And typically the M P O would administer these funds, but M T C declined to do that. And so we were contacted by the C P U C, asking if we would administer that program. And, and we said, of course, but you know, we're going to come back to you in, in September to ratify that. So staff said, we were going to have a conversation with C P U C. We've had one meeting, we're going to have another. And there's fifteen percent administer the program. It's called a wheelchair accessible vehicle program or WAVE. And I think we have some of, some of that here in Contra Costa County. And with our research or our testing program, I think we can come up with a pretty cool program for them uh in that program. So we'll bring that back to you for approval in the near future and probably in September. And lastly, uh, I'm going to speak tomorrow on a National Highway Traffic Safety Administration panel. They're having panels all day long talking about their new A V program, the reg, regulations. And for whatever reason, Contra Costa Transportation Authority is being asked to participate on the local experiences with automated driving systems. So Jacksonville, a transportation authority, Transit Authority, that Ford runs that. He came out to Gominsum Station, checked out our S A B program, went to Florida, and now he's mimicking what we're doing here. And he's getting a lot of fanfare. These guys actually delivered medical supplies on self diving shuttles. So Bernard Schmidt's going to represent Jacksonville. Southwest Pennsylvania Commission is now run by. Another than, other than Vince, Vince Valdez. Vince Valdez is Dave Hudson's good buddy and, you know, they, they, every time they go, Dave goes back to Washington. Goes back to Washington. He's got a Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. That's the home of Carnegie Mellon University and Uber. Uber's got a test facility there as well. And then the mayor of Chandler, Arizona, Kevin Hardkey is going to be on that panel. They're known for a lot of innovation there in Arizona. In the Maricopa County area and, and he'll be on that panel and then, and then we'll be represented as well. So that's tomorrow. It starts at noon. I don't have the details. It's invitation only. I think it's earmarked for the private, our public sector. But I'm pretty sure Lindsay, if you, if you want Lindsay or I can get you an invite. That's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions.
All right. Any other comments from commissioners or questions of Randy?
Yeah, Randy, you, you got any pull down in Pasadena? They canceled the Rose Parade. Can you put it back on?
No. And I can't, I can't get you a vaccine either. I'm sorry.
No. All right, if there are no other comments, the calendars uh are in your packet. And by the time we reconvene in September, my husband and I will have been married for fifty years. So.
Congratulations.
That's next month.
What day?
August eighth.
Mine's the twenty ninth.
The fiftieth?
Fiftieth anniversary.
All right, see, hey.
Must have been a great year.
It was a good year. All right, kids, we are adjourned until September. Thank you all.